Order, order. Good evening. I want to call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We will start with an invocation by Councilman Tonsmire and then I will lead us in the pledge, if you'll please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for the preservation that you've offered to so many, yet at the same time we have great concerns for those who've experienced damage to property and health. I ask your blessing upon all of us who gather here. Give wisdom and guidance for those who make decisions. Grant that all that we do will be fair to all those concerned. Give glory to your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Keeling, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1. Here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Hail, hail, the gang's all here. Our first order of business is the approval of the council meeting minutes from our April 21st meeting. Councils have these well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, corrections, deletes, or motions.
Mayor, I didn't see any corrections, or deletions, or additions. Make a motion, Chief Pruitt.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We have a quick presentation this evening by Ms. Tonsmire. If you'll please step forward, please. Cue the duck.
Yes. Thank you. I'm Sarah Tonsmire. I'm here on behalf of Advocates for Children tonight. I am the co-saleshare of the Duck Derby this year. And most of you, if you've driven through town, you've seen some sort of ducks. You may not know what it is, but you've probably seen ducks. But Ducks, the Duck Derby is the second largest fundraiser for Advocates for Children. It's a nonprofit located here in Bartow County. They help over 2,500 kids a year by preventing and treating child abuse cases. So we realize that there's a lot else going on with this swarm devastation and so we're just asking people to give what they can. Five dollars a duck and every duck makes a difference. So we're hoping to have 30,000 of these guys go down the river next Saturday. You can buy ducks up until Saturday. You can actually buy them at the race, but we would prefer you buy them before. So first prize this year is a 2011 Honda Fit. So it's a nice little car and just really appreciate any support that we can get for the Duck Derby next week. And I'll leave some of these forms out front and you can grab one on your way out. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Bye, Quacky.
Good luck, Quacky. (laughing).
Quacky and his lackeys. Other places to be. All right, we have some other commendations and recognitions tonight. The first of which is for the Teachers of the Year. I'm going to recognize them. They are from Cartersville Primary School, Margaret Zimmer; Cartersville Elementary School, Becky Rhodes; Cartersville Middle School, Kathy Hayes; and Cartersville High School, Valerie Webb. And we'll be presenting them with a resolution that is signed by yours truly that each reads that whereas by being named the Teacher of the Year at your school, whereas your personal dedication and sincere concern for quality education has made you an asset to the school system, and whereas your leadership has provided a vital service to the children of Cartersville, and where it is the desire of the city of Cartersville to honor this most valuable teacher, and now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Cartersville that because of your dedication and excellent performance of service that this means be taken to honor you for being selected Teacher of the Year at your school. The real expensive part, it's got my signature on it. And we're going to present these to you and when we call your name, or I guess I'll just meet you down here with the resolutions. You'll come forward, we'll get the picture, and then we'll get you on your way. How about that?
Margaret Zimmer, if you'll come forward, please. Cartersville Primary. Becky Rhodes.
She survives my daughter and now her husband's doing the same, Kathy Hayes.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
And Pete, if you'll get us kicked off with the, yes, class dismissed for y'all. I know you've got a place to sit. Pete, if you'll get us kicked off with the preservation projects.
Yes, sir. Thank you. May is National Historic Preservation Month and the Historic Preservation Commission began this month's activities with a booth at the depot this past Saturday in conjunction with the Arts and Crafts Show and the Taste of Cartersville. A joint proclamation signing with the mayor and Commissioner Brown will be held tomorrow at 2:00 PM at the 1914 Post Office Building, which is now the city manager's office, to proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month in Cartersville and Bartow County. Another one of the Historic Preservation Commission activities this month is to present the preservation awards for 2010. The Cartersville Historic Preservation Commission likes to recognize individuals who have completed exceptional work on renovation, revitalization, restoration, or have constructed appropriate infill developments for their home or business properties. The Historic Preservation Commission realizes that work of this nature will ensure that the physical, history, and character and heritage of Cartersville will be preserved for generations. Mr. Mayor, if you'll come down. Ms. Denise Archer, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, can present the After a brief description of each project, I will ask the recipients to come forward and receive their award and a photo op. 35 Edgewood Drive. This property owned by the William Hagler family is a wonderful example of infill development in historical neighborhood. The new construction was necessitated by the destruction of the previous house as a result of a fallen tree. You can see from these photos, if you can see from these photos, that the house was totally destroyed. J.B. Hudson with Greenway Construction Company, Greatwood Construction Company, made the project very easy by selecting a design for the lot that was most appropriate for the neighborhood. The Hagler family is represented tonight by Larson Hagler and Mr. Hudson is also present. This property owned by Margaret Rose White represents a fine example of what can be accomplished to restore a once attractive and well-built pyramid cottage. Besides the improvements to the exterior and landscaping, great efforts and expense were made on restoring the interior, including various pieces of antique furniture left by the previous owner. Tricraft Properties was a general contractor and is tonight represented by Brian McCollum. Despite, if you'll, y'all control.
Yeah, I read about that. I don't know.
29 West Main Street. Home of Specialty Accounting owned by Diane Burwell. This downtown property received a much-needed major facelift. You can see from some of the deterioration by the places where the plaster was falling off the sides of the building and around the windows on the top floor. The project certainly brightens up the corner of Main Street and North Urban Street. R.T. Childers Construction Company was a contractor for the job. And Diane's here, Diane's here tonight. Mr. Rodney Pitt. Couldn't be here tonight with a contractor. In a final note, I want to thank Richard Osborne and Catherine Henry and Todd Jessen for helping with photos and graphics and maps for all the activities we're going to have this month for the Historic Preservation Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pete. How about another round of applause? The time and the passion, the fashion, the financial commitment it takes to do that, it's one of the things that makes this city so wonderful and thanks for turning what could have been eyesores into bright spots for our city and we appreciate that. And y'all are welcome to stay, but you can go too. Don't get up and run out the door, but. All right, we have a series of, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. The first one is file AZ 11-01. It is an annexation and a zoning request. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This is an annexation and rezoning request to rezone the property at 42 Natchey Trail to a residential district in conjunction with the annexation. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the annexation and zoning to the R. 20 zoning category for this property.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. At this point, I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of this request, AZ 11-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against the zoning portion of this request may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning hearing. I will open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of this request. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the annexation public hearing. Chair will entertain any motions or further discussion regarding the annexation portion of this request, AZ 11-01.
Motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? All right, motion carries. The Chair will now entertain any further discussion or motion on the zoning portion of this request, AZ 11-01.
Motion to approve the zoning.
Second.
Out of motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have another public hearing. This is 11, excuse me, Z. 11-02, a rezoning.
Thank you, you and Mayor and Council. As with the previous request, this is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This property is being proposed to be rezoned to the Office Commercial or OC zoning district from the PS or Professional Service District, which is another non-residential district. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Any questions for Randy at this time regarding this? All right, I will open up the floor for a public hearing regarding this rezoning request. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against this rezon, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I will open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of this request. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the annexation public hearing. Chair will entertain any motions or further discussion regarding the annexation portion of this request, AZ 11-01.
Motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? All right, motion carries. The Chair will now entertain any further discussion or motion on the zoning portion of this request, AZ 11-01.
Motion to approve the zoning.
Second.
Out of motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have another public hearing. This is 11, excuse me, Z. 11-02, a rezoning.
Thank you, you and Mayor and Council. As with the previous request, this is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This property is being proposed to be rezoned to the Office Commercial or OC zoning district from the PS or Professional Service District, which is another non-residential district. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Any questions for Randy at this time regarding this? All right, I will open up the floor for a public hearing regarding this rezoning request. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against this rezon, may do so at this time. And seeing none, step forward. I'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain any further comment, questions, or discussions or motions on this Z. 11-02.
Motion to approve the rezoning application for Bora Properties from a PS zone to an OC. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have a public hearing, the first reading of our urban redevelopment plan. Randy, once again.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you had noted, this is a proposed amendment to the existing urban redevelopment plan, the portion that deals with the Northwest Industrial Zone. There's a proposal to add one tract of property to that at the request of the property owner. As you're aware, this goes through the process with the Department of Community Affairs. We will hold two public hearings in accordance with their requirements. As a minor map amendment, what happened with the adoption of the original urban redevelopment plan, the city successfully applied for inclusion in opportunity zones and with that designation, it allowed individual businesses to apply for job tax credits. What this will allow this additional property owner to do would be the same as allowed to the property owners that were in the additional boundary of that. I believe in a memo Richard had sent out that he had noted, so far there are five properties that have been approved by the Department of Community Affairs for the job tax credit that is offered for the properties that are in the opportunity zone. With that, this will be a first public hearing. We will be required to have another public hearing at the next scheduled council meeting and we look forward to adding this property to the existing urban redevelopment plan.
Any discussion or questions of Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. Before you go anywhere, though, it's the Randy Menino Show. You've got some appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then I think we're done with you for the evening.
You've got to make sure you had opened it up as a public hearing or closed it as a public hearing.
Oh, you know what? Thank you. Laura, you're the one that keeps me straight on that. You didn't have time to, though, did you? Randy, why don't you sit down while I open up a public hearing on this? I'm going to open up a public hearing for any discussion concerning the urban redevelopment plan. Anybody wishing to come forward and to make comment on the urban redevelopment plan, please do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close this public hearing on the urban redevelopment plan. We'll take up further consideration at the next meeting. Randy, we have some appointments to the Boarding of Zoning Affairs.
Yes, as you are aware, the Board of Appeals consists of seven members, one. And since the last amendment to our zoning ordinance, we have changed the structure of how they are appointed. Before, they were appointed at large and for three-year staggered terms. Now each individual council member will have an appointment as well as the mayor. And as the current terms expire from the present members, we'll be reappointing for terms that will run concurrently with the appointing council member and then go through reappointments. That way we can catch them back up on the timeframe that runs with the appointments as necessary. With that, Mr. Tonsmire is recommending Ken Wilson for reappointment representing the Ward 3 nomination. Diane Tate is recommending Linda Brooke for reappointment representing the Ward 5 nomination. Lindsey McDaniel is recommending Malcolm Cooley for appointment representing the Ward 4 nomination. And Carrie Hodges is recommending David Casmore for appointment representing the Ward 1 nomination.
Any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the separate wards stated here on page 45 for approval.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion are carried. Thank you, Randy. We have easements at Collins Point Holding.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. These are easements for various utilities for the new AutoZone building that is being built there and they are recommended for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a contract for performing services. Mr. Reinhardt.
I'm the mayor and council. This is the contract for the Annie Lee Wilkins Youth Summer Program for 2011. You recall that last year we decreased the amount to $18,000 and it is in the current budget. Recall last year that Mrs. Wilkins also requested that the funds be split into two payments, one in June and one in July. This contract would authorize the payment for the June and July payment.
Just as a point of clarification, I think you said increase the funding. It's actually maintaining the current level.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Okay?
And I do recommend your approval for this contract.
Okay. And did you want to point out the amended?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there is a new section four within the contract that would require by the 5th of each month for the contractor to prepare and send the city a monthly financial report indicating at a minimum all funds received and to who they were dispersed to, including a methodology indicating where or to whom the funds were provided.
And that's going to be a standard in all?
In all, in all of our service contracts it will be.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval for the contract for performing services for youth association.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Mayor, excuse me, let me ask Mr. Grove something. A monthly financial report which indicates the minimum all funds received and to whom dispersed?
Yep.
Methodology. So it's more than just financial report or is it just financial saying?
It is what it says it is. An indication of where they're spending the money, who it's going to.
Who it's going?
We haven't had that in the past. I think they had asked for it on a number of occasions, maybe not only, but this contractor, but with some others. And staff had discussed it.
But do they include participant numbers?
We basically, we basically did not want to hold them to a certain accounting standard in providing that so they would not necessarily have to go out and get an auditor or.
No, nobody would say.
So we just put, we want this basic information in there and y'all provide it to us in whatever format, y'all keep up with your records for a monthly report.
No, we don't want to be cumbersome on any of the grants we give out.
But they're public funds and you do need to know where they're being spent. This would assure that.
You good? All right, we've got right-of-way agreements for Main Street Gateway Project.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We recently finally got the final easement for the Main Street Gateway from the landowners and we're ready to proceed submitting paperwork to GDOT for their state funding, which expires by June 30th. We need to get this agreement approved by the city council and I recommend approval.
Discussion or motions are welcome.
Dan. Excuse me. Just to make sure I understand this, in the event that the contract is not fulfilled, then the refund is paraded on the entire amount, not just what we're paying. Is that correct?
Correct. Essentially, when we went back to the DOT commissioner and requested some additional funding, they put some money in there for landscaping. If we don't spend the additional amount above $4,000 for landscaping, then we'll parade back some of that money to them.
Carrie, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the right-of-way agreements for Main Street Project.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor. The Community Health Network, who provides our wellness program for city employees, has requested to, if us, to prepay the remainder of the contract in 2011. They will give us a discount of 10%. They're using these funds to expand their operation elsewhere. It's a savings of $5,985 to the city. I recommend approval of the addendum for $53,865.
Chair will entertain any discussion, questions, or motions.
We did that last year, didn't we?
Correct.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Yes, Mayor. The Georgia DOT and the Federal Aviation Administration has provided us another grant for the Cartersville, Bartow County Airport Authority. This was used to finish the pavement reconstruction project done by Bartow Paving. And the total grant, the city will have only yet to pay with the county 3% total matching grant of these funds. Our match on a $495,500 grant is $15,256 for city and county combined. Recommend approval of this additional grant paperwork for the mayor and city clerk to sign off on.
Any questions on this item? Feel free to make a motion or discuss.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Next item is the retirement board recommends some changes to our pension plan documentation. The first one is a buyback benefit termination. Several years ago, we, the plan used to be age 21 and one-year waiting period in order to join the pension plan. We changed that back in 2001 to 18 years old and six-month waiting period in order to give those employees that had to wait for the waiting period back when they were hired, we're giving them the opportunity with these changes being approved by city council to buy back that time at their cost, at the actuarial approved cost at termination employment. That's the first addendum to the pension plan. The second one is a terminal pay. What this does, when an employee leaves employment with the city and has vacation time accrued, we normally just pay them amount and the city has to pay 7.65%, which is the FICA and Medicare portion. The employee has to pay that additional amount as well. By rolling into the pension plan, the city saves that FICA and Medicare cost and the employee saves some money as well. It's, it'll be a net, there won't be a net gain or loss to the employee by rolling into the pension plan. It'll actually be a savings to the city, like I said, with the FICA and Medicare savings. And I recommend changes to both those plans be approved.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on this? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And next item is regards to employment learning innovations.
Yeah, Dwight had handled this earlier. This is for training materials that we use to train for Title VII, ADA, and some other things. It's with ELI, cost not to exceed $24,000. It does include, as we discussed earlier, workbook for participants and also video that Dwight handles and does a real good job. Additionally, if there are any council folks who would like to go through this, call my office, we'll schedule it for them. But right now we need to get these ordered and it's a cost not to exceed $24,000. And I recommend for your approval.
Chair will entertain any discussion or motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dan, back to work.
Mayor, I provide these two items. Both purchases will come from the fiber department. The first one is a Mersey backup generator with natural gas service to the generator. Generator cost is $3,693 and then there's labor to run the natural gas line to install that. Total cost is just under $7,900. That's an item that's in the fiber budget. The next item is for a new server for Great Plains and Coggsdale Utility Billing System software. If you recall, we, the council approved us moving up to version 10 of the Coggsdale system a few months ago. We're scheduled in early June for that upgrade. And the server we have is over seven years old. It's slowing down with the new processing speeds. I recommend approval of this new server. It's also going to be used for the GIS system, so there's lots funded money with that. It's going to be split 50/50 on the new server costs with the fiber system. I recommend approval of both these items.
Okay, so we've got two items for consideration. The North Node Emergency Generator and the Dell Computer Server and Software. We'll combine those into one motion if you find that appropriate or if there's further discussion, we can have that as well.
Make a motion for approval of both actions.
I'll second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both those items are approved. Mr. Hill.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The gas system is being required to locate, relocate a facility in conflict, Bartow County's road project down on Sugar Valley Road. The cost of this tapping and stopping of this mains is going to be $10,400. The cost of this tapping and stopping of this mains is going to be ten thousand four hundred fifty dollars. This work requires specialized equipment and training and is performed by a company, the only company in the southeast, is S.J. Patterson, and we're asking that y'all approve this. This is a budgeted items and I do have these saves and he verifies.
Okay, questions for Michael on this item? If not, motions.
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Why do we have to pay for relocation in lieu of the county? Because this property is in the county?
Yes, sir. It's on county right-of-way.
If we relocated and on our easement outside the right-of-way, they would have to pay to relocate us, since we're in the right-of-way.
Okay, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Now it's the Ed Mullenax Show for the next little bit here.
Mayor, council, the first item I have here is for roof replacement at the Water Pollution Control Plant. The primary and secondary lift stations at the plant have roofs that are in deteriorated condition and are in need of replacement. We received bids from three different vendors. Elite Roofing of Georgia submitted a low bid in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars. We recommend award of this contract to Elite Roofing. It will be paid for from the budget. We do have the proper save and E-Verify documents on hand.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ed, please talk to us about what you think is such a difference in the bids that we got on the roof? And do you think some people are just busy right now and some are not, or?
We, I think it's just the demand of work the individual roofing companies have, because we did go over the project very closely with each bidder and made sure that they were going to address all the problems and do the replacement to our expense.
I'm sure you did and I'm sure that's a good bid, but there's a lot of difference. Thank you.
I think we were talking in the work session, did we determine any three of these bids had an idea of their warranty?
I don't have that information here. I'm sure we do have a warranty requirement provided by that.
Our requirement or theirs?
Well, with the membrane manufacturer, generally there's just a limited company, a number of companies that produce these membranes and they have a standard warranty for the material. And then there's also the warranty that we require from the company installing it.
Okay, any other questions on this item?
I have a question, but it might be nitpicking.
Well, go ahead and pick.
Okay. You know, the average roof, resident roof replacement runs anywhere, I guess, from three to four thousand dollars. For two thousand square footies, fifteen hundred, something like that. What would be a good guesstimate of this in square footies for this primary and secondary lift station?
You know, right off the top of the bat, I'd say both these structures are probably forty-foot by forty-foot structures. One of the things that affects the bid price, there's a number of roof penetrations there, which increases the amount of work they have to do to seal around each of these penetrations. So that influences the bid quite a bit.
Is that a hole in the roof kind of thing? What's a roof penetration?
Like a vent pond.
Stuff coming out.
Down to a hole, skylight.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Not to delabor the subject, are these flat?
Yes, they're flat roofs.
Okay, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bid from Eli Ruby.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's Eli or Elite?
Either way.
Next item, Ed.
The solids collection units at the water treatment plant, the control systems on those are outdated and we're having problems getting replacement parts. So we've received prices to replace them with a more modern control system that's PC-based. Prices were received from three different vendors. Masters Electronics LLC submitted a low bid in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. We recommend award of this contract to Masters Electronics to provide the equipment, calibrate, and train plant personnel. This will be paid for from the budget and we do have the proper E-Verify save documents.
Any questions on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Continue on, Ed.
Okay. The next item is for repair of the screw lift pump at our water pollution control plant. We currently have a contractor in there, Southern Machine Fabrication Company, that's doing welding repairs to this pump. It was discovered that the bottom thrust bearing had deteriorated and needed to be replaced. In order for their work to proceed, this work had to be done. They're the sole supplier of this replacement part in the amount of seven thousand two hundred dollars. This will be paid for from the maintenance budget. It's an emergency repair. We do recommend approval and we have the proper save and E-Verify documents.
Okay, questions on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item, please.
The next item's a contract with Jordan Jones and Golding. We had a previous engineering agreement with them to handle the permitting for the installation of forty-eight inch casing into the river, as well as do site permitting. We had them looking at additional site and this was an increased scope and increased amount of work. The additional cost for this work was twenty thousand dollars. We're recommending approval of this change order of twenty thousand dollars to their original contract, which will bring the contract up to a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. There will be a separate contract later down the road for the design and bidding of the pump station. This will be paid for out of the budget and we do have the proper E-Verify and save documentation.
Any discussion on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the change order.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If you'll stay right there, I'm going to ask council, we've got four items to add to the agenda this evening. I'd like to entertain a motion to add those four items.
Motion to add.
Add four new items.
Alright, well, thank you. We've, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We got four added items. The first one is J.J.G. Engineering Services.
This is another contract with Jordan Jones and Golding. We currently have a project going on at the water treatment plant to stabilize the foundation of the main pump station that delivers water into town. We, the contract we have with contractors, a design, build, and construct contract. We would like to retain Jordan Jones and Golding to review the work that they're proposing, the method that is proposed, and then also monitor construction. The cost of these services is not to exceed ninety thousand four hundred twenty dollars. The contractor performing the stabilization work is on site. He has stepped up his schedule for completion and that should lower this amount here. We're recommending approval of this engineering contract in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand four hundred twenty dollars. We do have the E-Verify and save documents on hand for this now.
And the source of that, or where you paid it from?
Well, it's to be paid for from the budget. I think there has been discussion that we may reimburse the budget with a bond issue.
Okay, any other questions?
Ed, I got a question.
Oh, hold on, Carrie's got a question.
Sorry.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, if we didn't have this contractor on hand now, would this be a project that we would bid out?
Not exactly. No, that we worked with Jordan Jones and Golding to prepare the design, bid, and construction and documents to get this contractor in, so we pretty much need to stay with them through the whole process.
So this is all just one big huge job?
It's all part of one big job.
Yeah, the building is cracking and moving down the hill. And so it's kind of specialized stuff. If we don't stop it, it's sliding down the hill after that building.
It's a hybrid project, the construction project's a hybrid in that we had contractors submit proposals where they proposed different methods to correct the problem. And they have to come up with their own engineering, their own process for doing that.
I guess in that regard, you did bid it, though.
Pardon?
If you took proposals, you did bid.
So we did bid that part out, yes.
I understand now.
Okay.
Mr. Step, do you have a question?
I mean, I understand the urgency of a lot of these things. And I know we've asked in the past, and I'm not saying we have to use anybody local, but on this, it appears as though everything we see from the water department is J.J. and G. or Jacobs. And my question is, is there anybody else that we could at least price compare to? Not saying it has to be local, I'm just saying it would be nice to see.
Well, on this particular project, this was.
And I understand that.
Right.
I'm asking it in general.
Right.
He's asking, black and beige people like that.
Also to note that we do a lot of water and sewer line extension projects in-house, that we design in-house. And for these plant projects, it was appropriate, I think, to proceed with them because they originally designed this structure and we're more familiar with what was there.
I'd like to add something that also, like when you go to Savannah and you start talking to the separate people from North Georgia, J.J. is there. He's got it. But I guess he just ain't good.
Well, I think too, if you look at the proof of the pudding is the operation of the plant, the operation of the systems, the fact that they regularly receive awards from the state and that that's among the best in any round. I mean, that's the other part of it. I'm not saying that no engineering firm would be capable of doing that, but we need to be careful about who we select.
Right. I just know it's a lot of money and over the year it adds up. And it'd just be nice to see if there was somebody else beside them to keep them straight.
Alright, any other questions or conversation?
Just one quick one.
Sure.
Why do we think the pump building is sliding down the hill?
What they, the geotech engineers that were retained to look at the problem, it was an issue of slope stability. The foundation is built at the top of a slope and because of the soil types, the soil is starting to slop away, so it has no support on the edge of the building, so it's starting to sink.
So it wasn't an initial design flaw? It was just erosion and?
Sort of an unforeseeable thing.
Okay.
Now, one other one in addition to that, since we're talking about it, is what we're using to put the building back? Are we putting on pilings?
It's a system of micro piles where they come in and drill these holes that are about four inches in diameter. They drill down below the bottom of this clear well forty, fifty feet, inject these full of grout, and then that's tied into a beam that's going to support the wall.
Because that'll prevent it from happening again and you wouldn't have to worry about soil if you get out of bed rocking it on pilings then.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, last one.
Final item for the water plant, during the storm a little over a week ago on April twenty-seventh, we had an electrical power surge that destroyed the transformer that feeds one of the main pumps at the water treatment plant. We have four pumps, high-service pumps, that deliver water into town. Two of those pumps are scheduled to be taken out of service with this foundation work. And so to avoid getting caught in a situation where we have no backup pump and we're relying on one pump, we would have had an order of this transformer. And hopefully we'll have that installed in time that we won't have a delay with the contractor doing the foundation work. We felt that the chance of it being charged delay claims that could have far exceeded the cost of the transformer justified doing this on an emergency basis. CES of Cartersville quoted a price of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. This was reviewed and determined to be a fair price. They have a delivery date of May sixteenth. This will be paid for from the budget, item for maintenance to water treatment plant. And we'll also look at possible reimbursement from FEMA on this.
Yeah, we've got the form actually that you can use to fill that out. And they said that it was seventy-five percent potentially.
Ed, was that put out to bid?
No, we really, we were lucky to find one person who could deliver on this short.
Okay.
And CES is located here in Cartersville, along Slay Drive.
Okay, any questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Let's go back up to surplus equipment, Tom. He'll join us again.
I'm the mayor and council. In order to try to clarify and clear out some of the surplus items that we have throughout the city, I've compiled a list in various departments. These items that we saw on Gov. Deals, I wanted to make one clarification. I misunderstood the gas department when I was talking with them. They wish to, instead of selling them as scrap, the valves as scrap, they wish to try to sell them on Gov. Deals on a as-is basis. If they do not sell on the Gov. Deals website, they wish to sell them as scrap metal. I do ask for your approval to have these declared as surplus items.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Things that don't sell, what do we do with them?
We have not had a problem with that thus far. We have been told by the Gov. Deals folks that if nothing sells, we can actually re-advertise it and have someone come pick it up at no charge. It would be at their expense to pick those items up.
Well, I was just looking and I saw that we had like a copier that didn't even have parts anymore for it and I was wondering who in the world would buy that?
There are some people who buy things like that to use as parts, so.
Somebody has a copier that doesn't work and needs parts.
One man's trash.
They're going to recycle it, Jase.
You're going to buy it, aren't you, Jase?
I was into the pom-poms, but.
Good topic for another day.
I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you for segueing into business.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Next item we'll take up is an emergency ordinance concerning the ADA. Mr. Low.
Yes, for ongoing contracts with the Department of Transportation in the state of Georgia. They require the city to designate an administrator for the ADA program within the city and also to adopt an ADA policy statement. The emergency ordinance you have before you does both. It adopts the policy statement, which is attached to Exhibit A, and it names Dwight Hale as the ADA coordinator. It is recommended for your approval and the reason why it is an emergency is because you're approving some DOT contracts to go with it today.
Very good. Any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Grove, we got an anti-litam on him.
That's me.
That's alright. We received an anti-litam notice from a law firm in Atlanta, Page Perry LLC and Barry B. Green, a local attorney, involving a shooting by Barco County deputies that occurred about six months ago. The city police officers were not involved in this based upon our current investigation. Therefore, we are recommending that be denied and a resolution has been presented to you for your approval.
Any discussion on this item? If not.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That concludes our regular agenda. Any other business? Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor and council, Monday I received requests from the Ternison High School Baseball Dugout Club requesting, last year they were able to utilize our Richard Bell Field for hosting tournaments that were put on by Perfect Game. It'll be moving here to Emerson. They made that same request this year. Last year, I think the council was able to meet everywhere y'all were when this happened and offer that to them at no charge. and, and offer that to them at no charge. And that's the request again this year, so I'm bringing that before you this year.
And the benefit to us is?
The benefit to us is it brings a whole lot of people into town. We have a lot of people that use our facilities in, in doing this. The high school booster club puts the money that they raise back into the field and back into their program, so therefore it saves them having to come back to you more for additional money.
We know what that, that's the fee is.
Normally, our, our fee for that field is, well, we don't make that field out normally, but the field of that would be $150 a day. It'd be $750 a tournament. They requested four tournaments would be approximately $3,000.
Okay. Any questions, comments? When you put, we need to have a motion to do that?
It's not really on you. You need to, I guess, tell him if it's okay.
All right.
I didn't feel comfortable having to, that's why.
Sure. If anybody's got strong heartburn about it, speak now or forever hold your peace.
It brings people to town, Mayor. I think it's fine.
Proceed as you wish.
I appreciate that. I do have another couple items to bring, bring up. Saturday is, is our date for our, our annual Mountain Laurel Hike, although we did have one earlier one this past Saturday, but this is a scheduled one for Mother's Day weekend. Anybody wants to do the Mountain Laurel Hike from the east side of Pine Mountain, we'll be departing at, at 8:30 Saturday morning. And then our normal Moonlight Hike will be on May the 17th this year. So, I'd like to have y'all attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Budget work session Monday night, 5:30 here.
Any other business needs to come forward, council?
Mayor, just a comment. You and I participated today in the National Day of Prayer and we have our fire chief and police chief in the audience. I was really proud of all of our public servants as they circled and, and we honored them today for, for their service. And so, Chief, just wanted to recognize both of you. It's a nice event.
Certainly. I'll, I'll add that certainly while the city of Cartersville was very fortunate in that we were spared really hardly any damage from the tornadoes, our friends out in the county experienced pretty extensive damage in some areas. And typically joke when we have something, but it's only a test and, well, once again, our, our city folks, even though in the city limits, we weren't, we weren't tested on city ground, but I want to applaud our, our city departments and first responders, several the electric, several of the other departments, Public Works, Electric, that have gotten out there and, and helped out in the county, that helped on that evening. And also those, we've sent some folks to other communities that, that were in need of help. So, I think that's, that's certainly worth noting. We appreciate and applaud your efforts. So, thank you. Anything else to add? Cartersville baseball playoffs start tomorrow, 4 o'clock, with a doubleheader. Get out and support the Canes. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Please adjourn.